Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for Monday, October 30, In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 26, 2017 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood will call the roll.
Sure. Ms. Bogusetsky, Ms. Santafonte, Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley.
Here.
Mr. Kins.
Here.
Dr. Swanson.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Mrs. Gillette.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have approval of minutes from the October 9, 2017, meeting. This is for the regular minutes. I'll take a motion for that.
Come in.
In a second. Any discussion on the October 9 minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We had correspondents as listed, and I'm going to turn to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I am pleased to share some good news from around the district with the board and the community members who are joining us this evening. Congratulations to the Hillsborough High School Boys' Cross Country Team who earlier this month won the county championship by eight points, beating out Ridge and Montgomery, who tied for second place. This is the boys' fifth county title in the last seven years. The team ran an average time of 16 minutes and 57 seconds for each athlete, and the top five finishers were less than 40 seconds apart. Congratulations to team members Owen Zabo, Rob Moore, Taylor Ballis, Ryan Mitchell, Kenya Yahy, Will Shawkoff, Chris Drigg Ricoli, and Coach Eric Rosenthal, and all of the team's successes this year. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations also goes out to the Hillsborough High School Gymnastics Team. On October 4, the team won the Somerset County Championship. This was the fourth straight team title for the girls and the 10th overall since the championship's inception in 2006. Freshman Jocelyn Moore led the team in scoring and earned top honors in the Vault, Bar, and Floor County Championship. Sophomore Sam Ringel was the team's leading scorer on the balance beam and also finished as runners-up on the beam and bars. Other contributed scorers included Stella Panchenean in Vault, juniors Renee Kinzler in Floor, and Cindy Lew in Bars, as well as sophomore Jordan Bell on Beam. Congratulations to the team and Coach Beth Moran. I am pleased to report something that many of us already know. Hillsborough Township is a great place to live. New Jersey Monthly agrees as well. The magazine listed Hillsborough one of the best places to live in New Jersey, based upon several quality-of-life criteria as compiled by the magazine. The magazine rated Hillsborough Township as the 46th best place to live in New Jersey out of 513 municipalities, putting Hillsborough in the top 10% of the state. New Jersey Monthly bases its rankings on a number of different statistics and rankings, including population, average property tax, crime rates, and school rankings. Hillsborough was ranked the fifth-best place to live in Somerset County. On October 21, over 100 area seniors and nearly as many 4th graders from Hillsborough Elementary School and Village Elementary School in Montgomery participated in a few morning games that tested their skills in such timed events as Q-tip balancing, unraveling toilet paper, and emptying tissue boxes. The intergenerational Minute to Win a Challenge took place for the eighth year, offering area seniors and students an opportunity to have fun together and compete for the minute to win a trophy. Hillsborough Township students and seniors did a wonderful job. Let's congratulate to all of those who participated this year. Congratulations, finally, to the 2017 Group Five State Champions, the Hillsborough Raider Marching Band. The band scored 93.6 at the state championships this past Saturday night. In addition to winning the title, the marching band also won caption awards for Best Music and Best Overall Effect. This coming weekend, the Raider Marching Band travels to the University of Maryland for their final competition of the season at the U.S. Bands Mid-Atlantic Regional Competition. Congratulations and best of luck next weekend to the Hillsborough High School Marching Raider Band members and directors Jules Heron and Nick Clipperton. I also wanted to mention, before I turn it back over to our president, that we have continued to work with EDI, which is our environmental consultant, on the water testing for lead in our pipes, and they are going to be recommending to us that we retest all of the bubblers and the water fountains in the district moving forward. And with additional details, Mr. Mahmood, if you wouldn't mind just sharing, and I know that we have a representative from EDI that's here with us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Yes, so the board did, from our last meeting, we had given EDI some, an opportunity to work with the data that they had collected from a prior company, and I think EDI was very thorough in trying to get as much data as we can. The conclusion of that indicated to us, as the administration, and now we're sharing it with the board, I think we also shared it with the board via email, that we are going to recommend, and EDI is going to be working with us fairly soon, to work with our schools and find all the water fountains that are currently being consumed, to retest all of those. We talked to EDI about those particular fountains, and, you know, one of the issues that were brought up on our part was, do we shut down all of those water fountains? Is that a recommendation at this point? And that is something that we're not going to do. We're going to work on retesting them, and if there is a problem with those fountains, then we would then shut them down and provide an alternate water source. So, at this point, Tim, I don't know if you would like to, I'd like to come up to the podium, just kind of summarize, I think Dr. Schiff and I were able to kind of steal the thunder a little bit from what you're going to present, but I think it gives the board, and if they do have questions, President Gillette, we'd give the board the opportunity to also ask some questions, but I do know you needed some time, we've given you that time, and now you're back with a recommendation, so if you just want to share with the board your thoughts, and also a timeline, I think the board really wants to know, like, what's the next steps, how long it's going to take, so we can come back to the public and actually try to put this thing behind us, in terms of remediation, if that's required, but more importantly, to just get those tests done immediately, so that we can provide information as to where we are.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for having me again. As was explained, the recommendation to the district, based on conversations with the Department of Education, based on what had transpired previously with the other consultant that was here doing the water testing, the recommendation, following the Department of Education recommendation, to retest the drinking water outlets throughout the district. So, we are working with the district in terms of identifying those drinking water locations. We're looking to get some input from principals at the individual schools to make sure that we get not just the drinking water fountains and bubblers, but what other locations there might be that people use to make coffee, use for, you know, making a cup of soup or something like that. And we'll get that list together. We hope to start that work of collecting that list later this week, Thursday, Friday, in fact, and then by next week, it's possible that we may be beginning some of the resampling events. And then, it's a matter of just time for the lab to analyze those samples. Typically, there's a two-week turnaround on those samples, so that's the kind of timeframe we're looking at. If we start collecting, if we need a week and a half to two weeks to collect everything, and then those samples run just sort of in parallel with that, if we take the set of samples, those go in, and then the next school, et cetera, so we would work through a process like that. That's pretty much it. I mean, I think we've talked about it previously, we had the committee meeting that we spoke to. I don't know if anybody else on the board has questions, but be certainly happy to try to answer your questions the best I can.
That just was, oh, Mrs. Trillo.
So, my question is, with the Department of Education, what change, are they now saying that we should test all outlets in all schools?
No, the, as we discussed at the committee meeting, our conversation, the conference call that we had had with the district and with EDI, speaking to the gentleman from the Department of Education, his recommendation was that we resample all of the drinking water outlets only, not all of the outlets that had previously been sampled, just the ones that are really the consumable water location, so water fountains, bubblers, if there's, you know, food prep sinks in a cafeteria, that kind of thing.
So, basically, going back to what we could have done the first time around? Like, we did not have to do washing sinks and so forth? Is that right? So, bathroom sinks?
Yeah, the regulations are clear that, you know, you need to, you're required to sample the locations, what they call drinking water outlets, and that means locations where people drink the water, or the water is used for food preparation. Districts were allowed, there was no restriction on sampling other outlets. We've worked with many districts, some districts have sampled even restroom sinks in locker rooms. So, you did what I think you were required to do, and my understanding is you did a little bit more as well.
So, what has changed in the data that prompted the Department of Education to ask us to retest? What was, what was the error, I guess? Is there an error?
So, the real thing that the Department of Education had an issue with was the procedure with which the samples were collected, the methodology that was utilized. In particular, what was pointed out was the school-wide flushing events that took place on the evening before the samples were collected. So, what apparently happened was that on the night before, a certain school was going to be sampled, the outlets were flushed, the water was allowed to run through them for a period of time, 30 seconds to several minutes, and then allowed to sit for the required eight-hour minimum set time. But it was the act of flushing the schools prior to the sample collection that the Department of Ed had a particular issue with, and they pointed out that unless the school district is in the routine habit of flushing the system like that, that the samples then were collected in an environment that wasn't reflective of the normal operating conditions of the school. And the point of the testing program, the protocols and methodologies, was to take samples that were reflective of the normal conditions within the school. So, for whatever reason, the other company that was here doing the testing initially implemented that methodology, that's not something, obviously, that was spelled out to do in the regulations. And then, as we went through our review and were asking questions with the district, and the district was asking questions of the previous consultant, we reached out to the Department of Education, as well as the Department of Environmental Protection, and got the feedback that we got, and the recommendations that we got specifically from DOE, who in the end really administers this program, and so we're acting on those recommendations through the DOE.
Thanks.
That just was on.
Thank you, yes. Mrs. Trillo covered a lot of what I wanted to cover, but I just wanted to go a step further on the recommendation. With respect to guidance from the DOE and the Department of Environmental Protection, is there a standard operating procedure that they, and guidance that they give to administer these tests to all of the contractors, and this was specifically, the flushing was specifically counter to what the SOP was?
Yes, in my opinion, and in the opinion of our company, and when we raised the issue to the district, obviously, they said, "Well, hey, this other company said it was okay." And we said, "Well, that, you know, that's their interpretation, and this is our interpretation." We, you know, you need a tiebreaker here, and the tiebreaker, rightly so, was the DOE who administers the program. And through a series of conference calls, actually with them, as well as some emails that were exchanged, you know, the interpretation that we had provided to the district was the way that the program was intended to be administered, and hence the recommendations that we're now talking about.
Great, thank you. Hopefully, the DOE can correct whatever guidance they give, so there isn't an interpretation allowed.
Ms. Haley.
This doesn't have to do for the current speaker, but as a board, are we going after the other company to refund us for the money because they give us invalid information?
Well, we talked about this a little bit last time. Where, where seeking legal advice in order to, in order to find the appropriate remedy?
That's a good way to put it. Anyone else from the board? All right, so while you're here, and not to keep you all night, I'll ask if anyone from the public has a question that you might be able to answer, we can take those now, sort of out of order, but I think it sounds like a better idea. So, if public on this issue, please approach the bench.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. Just had a few questions, either for the board or for the gentleman from EDI. On the October 9 board meeting, where we last spoke about this, when I raised the issue of, right, in that meeting, we had 60 that were in question, not all of which were bubblers, but 60 outlets that were in question. When I asked what would be done if other outlets came into question, the gentleman from EDI responded, and I quote, "We will be taking immediate action to shut those outlets off as well." We're now hearing that we're going to leave other ones open that could or could not be contaminated, but the risk is, it's possibly there, but we're now hearing that they could possibly be open for consumption, and I'm just asking what has changed since the October 9 meeting?
Maybe we'll have Tim can clarify what his recommendation is and how he got from that, from October 9 until October 30. Sure. Thank you for the question. I, I'm not sure what we were specifically talking about outlets that we were investigating that had an exceedance of the action level, or more in general. Certainly, if we had found any outlets through our data review, the action would be that we would have recommended to the district to immediately take those outlets out of service. And in fact, I did find one outlet that had an exceedance on it, and passed that information along to the district, and they acted accordingly with that information. In terms of what you're, we're talking about now with resampling of the drinking water outlets, that's just the recommendation that we're following up through with the DOE, which is to go back to all of the identified drinking water outlets in the district, and resampling them as if it was the initial sampling event that was done back in the spring sometime, April, May timeframe.
Okay, but considering that the flushing was done at those times, it's foreseeable that some could come back high, correct?
It is, yes.
So, my follow-up question being, if the flushing was done for the original tests and we cleared those ones, it's foreseeable that other ones would come back, and we just don't know it at this point, and they are open for consumption, correct? So, with that in mind, I was wondering if the other schools will be notified as EDI moves through the other schools doing the testing, if they'll be notified that the water may or may not be safe for consumption, if there'll be something put in place to address the concerns in those schools on the off chance, or, you know, whatever chance, that a child or a staff member could consume water with potentially high levels of lead in it?
Yeah, we would communicate anything that our consultant asks us to do. At this point, because we had an experience with a consultant that we felt was, didn't yield the type of results that we paid them to do in terms of testing appropriately, we are now yielding to the recommendations of our professionals that we consult with. If it is something that is recommended, we will do it. Absolutely, we'll communicate whatever we need to communicate to our community, but we are deferring that judgment to the professionals, and whether or not that is appropriate to do, we would do it. My sense is, is that they will be recommending that we do do an overall communication to the community, indicating that we will be resampling all of the drinking water outlets, and just to reiterate something that was said before, that we tested all outlets, and we tested everything, including bathroom sinks and other faucets that typically kids don't drink out of. And now, we're going to be identifying all of those areas that kids or staff drink out of, and we're going to be retesting those.
Sure, and I guess, I don't know if this is a question for you, Dr. Schiff, or for EDI, but I guess the piece that I'm having difficulty understanding is why, if there is a potential risk that someone could consume high levels of lead in any of these outlets, or that they have been since they were previously cleared due to the flushing, or for whatever, whatever reason, that we're not taking the proactive step of just turning them off, so that no one can consume anything out of them from this point forward?
If our consultant told us to do that, we would do that in a heartbeat.
Is there a reason that we're not taking that step?
So, we are approaching this resampling event, as I said, as if this were the initial sampling procedures that were taking place back in the, in the spring. And at that time, you wouldn't have sampled, you wouldn't have shut water off before you sampled. So, that is, that is the, I guess, the rationale for what we've recommended, is to say that we're trying to replicate the original, the original process. So, if we start shutting drinking fountains off now, that's going to potentially start impacting the normal operating conditions of the school, which is exactly what the Department of Education told us was the problem with the other company's results. So, we're trying to take an approach to say, "Okay, we're going to run in and do the sampling as if this was the way it originally was intended to do." And back in the spring, when every district in the state was doing the testing, they didn't shut off the drinking water outlets before they were tested, and nobody knew what those lead levels were like anywhere in the state, for decades, that people were drinking from them. So, we have a little bit of data now, it's questionable, the outlets that showed high with the other company's results have been addressed, so, I mean, there is some level of assurance there, not completely in the dark, as you were back in April, but we're trying to move quickly with this, as I mentioned before, timeline, we're trying to get the information this week, maybe start testing as early as next week, and trying to maintain the conditions as normal operating as possible. So, that's really the basis for our recommendations to the district.
Thank you very much.
Ultimately, my only other question or comment, I guess, because we may not have consensus on this, but I appreciate the rationale that we need to employ to do the testing, I understand that explanation, but the fact of the matter is, is that we're not going into this as we were when the testing originally happened, because when it originally occurred, we had the luxury of assuming that there would be no lead. And as time has gone on, we've seen that there are flawed testing mechanisms that are put in place, we're addressing those, I appreciate that, but we know for a fact that lead is present in some, in some of our schools, not necessarily all, but we know that it is present in some, and I appreciate that we have to mimic the conditions, but I am concerned that we're taking that step by possibly allowing staff or students to consume water that could turn around and then have levels that were unsafe at that point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public on this topic?
I'm going to have to clarify. Are there any, are there any water sources that have tested with high levels of lead in the school district that are currently in use?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Tim.
Go ahead.
Tim, thank you for coming tonight. We'll, we appreciate, I'm sure we'll be in touch with the remaining tests, but thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to committee reports? Yes, committee reports. I just wanted, I just wondered if you had anything else. That's why. Committee reports, did committees meet? Some committees meet? So, Mrs. Haas first, she has to go first. Education Committee.
Yeah, the Education Committee met back on October 10, and we unfortunately only had a very short meeting, but we did cover a few important items. One was a policy on administering an opioid antidote. We reviewed the resource commitment to the district, if this policy were to be, were to be adopted, and the costs were there, but minimal, and we decided as follows, that we should cover all grade levels, that we might be able to get Narcan training and possibly some supplies for free, at least initially, and that if Narcan is used, the person administering it must also be prepared to do CPR. Most importantly, Narcan cannot hurt anybody if it is used, and not necessary, so the possibility of doing harm to somebody apparently is not there. And what we decided to do, since this was an option provided by the policy company, is that we will develop a policy for all schools, but during school hours only, and we will, you know, provide the necessary materials that are needed to proceed with that, so hopefully, we'll have that for the next meeting, or one of the meetings in November. We also spoke about, further about the professional boundaries policy, which has become a little bit more complex than we thought it would be, but we're getting there, and the Education Committee is going to discuss it once again at our meeting on November 14. We're basically looking at whether or not there should be an addendum to a policy, or if it should be a handbook matter, and we have to make sure that it's consistent with other policies, because as I've mentioned in the past, there are at least 10 policies that relate to various elements of professional boundaries. So, we need to put all of that together, make sure we're not contradicting ourselves, and also share with a number of involved parties on that. So, hopefully, that will have some more news next month. We talked about the grading policy, very, very shortly, unfortunately, that's when we got cut off, and we will be continuing that discussion on November 14. And I've been advised there's also going to be a community event on grading on November 14. Details to follow? Details to follow. And finally, we had a discussion about disproportionality, which is something that's very important. We want to make sure that all achievement gaps are addressed in the school district. Overall, the district does really well on achievement, and we just want to make sure that everybody's participating in that achievement. I also would like to just bring the board's attention to something that I saw that yesterday on Meet the Press. There's a movie coming out called Heroin, with the E at the end in parentheses, and it's about a town in Huntington, West Virginia, which is being called the ground zero for the opiate addiction fight, and some of the statistics were incredible. I mean, they were talking about 64,000 Americans died last year from drug overdoses, and they equated that number to more than the number of people who died in Vietnam. And particularly in this town, the heroin, in quotes, was a woman named Jane Raider, who's the fire chief there, and some of the things she was talking about was that 10% of her county is addicted to opiates. There was a 443% increase in the last two years, that 26% of the time, the fire department is going to an OD, while 9% of the time, they're going to fires. So, they have a very, very negative situation going on there. They say it's like five and a half ODs a day in their town, and they make the point that the youngest has been 12, the oldest is 78, there are no boundaries of age, sex, race, and what they're saying is that 80% started with a legal prescription for painkillers. And if I can say anything, you know, it's just really important to watch out when people have surgery, when people have dental work, and whatever, you know, do everything you can to make sure that the people you care about don't get hooked on, on painkillers. And she was supporting Narcan as well, because her view was that without Narcan, if the people aren't alive, you can't treat them. So, she was sort of saying that we need a combination of Narcan and treatment and awareness and education, so I just wanted to pass that along. Finally, without going into too much detail, Gene Trillo and I attended the Finally, without going into too much detail, Jean Trujillo and I attended the School Board Association workshop last week. I particularly attended classes in school law, news media, voting issues for school boards, unleashing your organization's potential for change leadership and management, which hopefully will be helpful during our strategic planning process, a class about the alignment of E S S A and Q S A C, just for Lisa's benefit, a class on dynamic consensus and consensus dynamics, mostly because our superintendent was giving, and two other classes that were, you know, very special. One was understanding the key work of school boards, and they were basically saying, the theme of that class was that you become a board member as an individual, but you need to succeed as a board. And they were saying the most important thing that boards do, the key work, is vision, accountability, policy, and community leadership. The other thing that I thought was absolutely wonderful was a keynote speech by Maurice Elias, who people may know from Rutgers. He is the guru of social and emotional competency, and it was a wonderful speech about what students need to be successful in 2027 and beyond. And what it really came down to is courageous leadership. The word courage was used a lot, for some reason, at this year's workshops, and it's something to think about. What he was saying about social-emotional competence was that basically, our students need that for their safety, they need it for achievement, they need it for their character. With an uncertain future, the one constant needs to be the importance of caring, personal relationships. And they've done so much study on this subject, and they were saying that students need more than traditional academics, they have to be adept at collaboration, communication, problem-solving, and they need to shift from the focus on college and career continuity, and accept that academic is not enough, that social and emotional competency is basic and essential to academic achievement. And it was just a very, very eye-opening presentation, and I do have some materials that I can share, and maybe put up on Facebook or somewhere. But it was very personally meaningful, and again, yeah, well, they were saying, again, courageous leadership is needed, we have to look to the future realistically, and with commitment, and provide support, adults to model, and act as rainbows in other people's clouds. So, with that, I'll hand off. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. We had HR committee, Dr. Schiff, would you do the HR committee report? I see that Mr. Shewski is absent tonight.
The committee met on October 9th, and we discussed the purchasing assistance job description, and we also discussed the, a training program that was recommended by Dr. Swanson on heightening people's awareness to professional boundaries. There is a recommendation that coaching resumes, including high school varsity head coach, as well as junior varsity coaches, be attached to the board agenda for, for board review. Mr. Volpe is currently working on a process for, for club approvals. There was a discussion about extra-period science lab coverage and a personnel manner.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. And operations committee met twice, I'm going to do that right now.
Thank you.
No problem. It's, we met October 12th, this was the longer meeting. First up on the agenda was we added a hardscape assessment to our facilities assessment, it's an additional cost, but we think it's going to be worth it, this will cover parking lots and other outdoor areas, roadways, and curbing, and things like that. In conjunction with that, Mr. Mahmood's going to prepare a list of recent projects that we've had outside parking lots and things like that, so that we, at the same time we're getting this assessment, we can see how those projects have been holding up. I thought that was a good idea. We talked about the, we could do a repair on two rock, rock, what's it called? Rock walls? At, the rock wall part at Aris?
Yes.
Oh, I thought there was another rock wall also. Oh, at HMS, and Aris. Yeah, so the rock walls that they use for PE at, at the middle school in Aris, needed a little bit of work done, so we're going to get that done to make sure they're safe. We had an update on the non-public transportation routes, those have been working fine. We had Mr. Gromen, who was here this evening from EDI, came, and this was, this meeting was, this operations committee, operations committee meeting was three days after our board meeting, where he was here last time, and at this meeting is when Mr. Gromen made his recommendation that we retest the consumable outlets. So he reported that to us at that time. Mr. Quintero gave us a facilities update. We talked for a little bit about getting a new scoreboard at the, for the high school football field, nothing, we're not doing anything on that, we just, we just discussed it. We discussed adding the, an RFQ for architect of record in this cycle that will come up in May. I don't think we normally have the architect on this cycle, so we're adding it to this cycle, we have like a three-year cycle, I believe, on the, on the professionals, but we're going to add the architect to this cycle, because we have a lot of architectural things going on, so we thought we'd take a look at that. Okay, and then we, then we met again on October 25th for a phone conference, and this was, had one major agenda item, and this was to discuss the rebid, the second bids on window air conditioning, and this time the bidding was to provide window unit air conditioning to the Barton Road School and to the middle school. So we just discussed that, that's going to be on your agenda tonight, I think we should have a further discussion, maybe at that time, unless you want to have it now, maybe at that time, because we have people from the public that want to come up, that want to come up, and pretty soon for new business, I think. So, we'll have that discussion then. And that was it, that was operations two meetings. Good. Governance met tonight. We had a brief meeting, well, actually, it wasn't that brief, right, it was about an hour, about strategic plan, and we can talk more about that when we, as we go forward with the strategic plan. All right, so that's committee reports, any other comments from the board for committee reports? Other thing? Yeah, please.
I just wanted to ask a question about the facilities and landscape, hardscape?
Yeah, we added the hardscape to the assessment.
So that is forward-looking, that's what we may need to do in the coming years?
Yes, yes.
And how far out would that look?
So, how far, yeah, so.
Yes, I think, good question, Dr. Swanson, that can go anywhere from five to 10 years, I mean, depends on the asset management piece that they look at. So, you know, as they do, we really didn't say it's capped at 10, 20. I think the purpose of this was to look at the inventory, some of our life for our boilers and the infrastructure, so I don't think there was a cap on it, I think they were looking for a long-term facilities plan, plus a short term. So I don't think that they quantified and said, oh, we're only going to go out five years. If they're in the building, and they see something that, particularly an inventory piece, that is going to last us 15 years, but then they're going to tell us, after 15 years, you're going to have to replace that. So I don't think that they put a time span on it, I think they were going to do their best to identify as long as they can, based on the assets that we have, what would need to be either changed or looked at. So I think that the report that we're going to get is going to be very comprehensive, but there were no parameters on the lifespans, like that was something that they were just going to assess, based on what we have.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
Good. That was my understanding also. All right, any other important, okay, so we're going to go to comments from the public. This could be on items that are on the action agenda tonight, or any new business, so this is some new item that we haven't discussed at a recent meeting, you can come up now to the podium. This is your chance, Paul, yes?
Looking at it.
So the first thing you could do is tell us your name and where you live.
Okay. Hello, my name is Nikhil Patel, and.
My name's Tavishafaria.
We are both sixth graders, and we both live in that direction.
That's good enough. If you're a school student, you just can tell us what school you go to, so you go over here.
Yeah, Aris.
Aris, perfect, that's all we need to know for that.
Okay, so, do you know what Diwali is?
Diwali is the festival of lights, and is the biggest and most significant festival, which is celebrated by millions of people around the world, including New Jersey and Hillsborough. It is mainly observed by Hindus, Sikhs, and Jains to symbolize the victory of light over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, good over evil, and hope over despair. Good over evil is the main reason we celebrate Diwali. For example, in some Hindu festivals, our religious gods stick together and realize the fact that good will always defeat evil.
So then, why do we need a day off on Diwali? Kids should be able to know their heritage and how things work in their religion. Celebrating Diwali together as a family can help the kids learn more about Diwali. With a day off from school, kids can spend more time with their families and do more things together as a family. For example, many people can go to the temple to worship God, to bless them for a good upcoming year. But without having a day off on Diwali, there can be other problems too, which may also convince you why we need a day off.
Since many American schools don't have off on Diwali, parents are not sending their children to school, which then results in the students to miss class and important schoolwork.
Other townships have already agreed to the fact that there should be a day off on Diwali in schools. Why isn't Hillsborough considering a day off on Diwali? What is on your minds? So, are there any reasons, specific reasons, why you're preventing Diwali from a day off in school?
Well, first of all, thank you for your presentation, you're also responsible for the petition that we received today.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, that must have taken a lot of work. I think there were, Dr. Schiff, how many names do you think?
Five out of 30.
Oh, five, beautiful, love it. It was great. So, we have considered, in our, when we do our calendar each year, we have considered Diwali as a potential, they are from school, closing school on that day. New Jersey State Department of Education recognizes, I think, over 100 religious, how many?
180.
180, there you go, as many, I should remember that, because I've talked about this before at the school board meeting, there are as many religious holiday allowances as are our school days, easy to remember. So there's practically one for every school day. So, along with that, they make the qualification that you may, you may stay home from school that day, with a note, there can be no adverse effect on school for you that day, teacher cannot mark any paper late, you can take any test over, this goes for any of the religious holidays. Now, how do we choose some, I think your real question is, how do we choose to have some day off, and not others? In Hillsborough, as I think in many school districts, probably all of them, we, when we look at the calendar, we base what days we're going to have off for holidays of this type, based on how many students we expect not to be in school that day. And.
Teachers and staff.
And teachers and staff also, yeah. So, and for some holidays, teacher and staff is a more significant absence, and you may even, it's even, it's not only subject, we don't only, we don't only subject that rule to religious holidays, we, we did the reverse thing, we used to have school on, take your child to work day, and we had so many absences that we made that a holiday, for, for our students, we had, we took that day off because we had maybe 40% absence on that day. So, we looked at it strictly on how many students that we predict, and teachers we predict, will be absent that day. In other towns, I think, in other school districts, I believe that there are many, many, many more students that will have, that will be absent on that day, we don't predict as many in Hillsborough at this time. I know Dr. Schiff has looked into this extensive, if you want to make a remark, Dr. Schiff?
Yeah, we did, in terms of looking at attendance, to see if there was changes in attendance, and we don't see a significant change in attendance, at least at this point. And I remember a few years ago, when members of our community came to our board meeting to ask the same question about Diwali, they shared with us that we send our, our children to school on this day because of the value that school has, and, and we appreciate that. The board typically, however, makes the determination not based upon the value of one holiday over, over another holiday, it bases it on the, on the absentee rate of either students or staff.
That's the only, that's the only consideration this time, I appreciate your effort, we will, we will talk about Diwali again when we make the next, when we make the next calendar, it's always, it has risen to the top, sort of, of the, of the list of holidays that we talk about each time, so it's very important for you to come back, again, in a few months if you want to, come back next year, anytime, and if you need to follow up with Dr. Schiff, email him, he'll be sure to follow up with anything he said today and put it in writing for you, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public on new business or the action agenda? You around? Okay, so, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel-related expenses, to affirm the superintendent's HIB determination list as attached, to also approve the submission of the 1718 NJQSEC Statement of Assurance, overnight field trips, curriculum writing, and to accept the ESEA grant, also to participate in the Bristol-Myers Squibb Students to Science Virtual Laboratory Program for January 2017 through June 2018, and to approve the revised health and physical education curriculum.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, any discussion on the education agenda? All right, none? All right, seeing none, Mr. Mahmood, please.
Sure. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kents?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. HR.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of human resources that I'm recommending, to approve the retirements of Jeanette Gugliano, lunch aide, who has worked at Aris here since January of 98, also Joel Higgins, an instructional assistant at the high school, who has been with us since January of 2008, also Barbara Patone, instructional assistant, who's been with us since 97, and Irina Regic, who's been with us since 1999, and also Bonnie Sobel, who's a music teacher at the middle school, who's been with us since May of 1988, and we thank them for their service to our district and our community. We did have, and I asked the board to note, an additional resignation that we just got in today, listed on the agenda, as well as a second resignation. Also to approve revised leave of absences, as listed, revised long-term substitutes, also to approve revisions of contracts, to rescind a contract, and approve contract changes, as well as revised leaves of absences that are, that are listed. Please note that number two, the details of the effective dates have been listed on the online version. Also to approve the appointments of a school counselor, school psychologist, teacher, long-term substitutes, technician, instructional assistants, a lunch aide, and co-curricular advisors. Also approve substitutes, as listed, to approve the mentors, to approve elementary intramural advisors and district webmaster, to approve extra-period coverage, I'm sorry, to approve pre-approved extra-period coverage, and to approve extra-period coverages.
Okay, so just to be, just to be clear, the resignations, the second one was on the email that Mr. Volpe sent today.
Which number, is that, is that a separate item or no? Because if not, I want it to be a separate item, I don't have enough information to vote on it.
On the, on the, on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that one separate, on that second resignation.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely, sure. So let's just, so since we didn't have a motion, let's just have a motion on the whole thing, except the second resignation, somebody make that motion, okay? That was Brett.
Yeah, second.
Okay, Tom. All right, discussion on those items. No? Okay, so, let's have a roll call on everything but. Okay, so, um, let's have a roll call on everything but the second resignation.
Shirley. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, um, motion for resignation number two, I'll call it.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I understand the reasoning behind it, but there's, I don't have any information on this at all. And given the things that have come to light over the past few years, the things that have happened with resignations, I don't feel comfortable voting on it.
That's, that's fair. Duly noted. Roque, it's a Roque.
Sure, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Um, Stan.
Uh, Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Um, let's go ahead to, um, operations.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operation, operations, to approve the monthly financial reports, to approve monthly bills list, to approve the, uh, comprehensive maintenance plans and M1s, to approve the resolution for air conditioning project at Aris and the middle school, approve, um, ESY parent transportation contract, also approve the seventeen eighteen, a second, um, parent transportation contract, and to accept the donations from the Norris Hills Farms of twenty pumpkins for the HHS, um, fax department. Also from the Youngerman family, a full-size cello, cello stand, music stand, tuner, and mute for the Aris Orchestra Program. Also from Patricia Bowen, uh, colonial costumes and books on colonial life. And from the Quaglia family and loving memory of David Quaglia, a refrigerator range, top stove for the high school, and from the Rotary Club, five hundred and fifty-two dictionaries for third-grade classes across the district. And we thank them for their donations.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If we can separate out eleven-four, please.
Okay. So, um, we'll, um, do, no, if there's no, no questions, others? Okay, so let's do, that was right. So let's do, um, roll call on everything except eleven point four. Then we can have some discussion about that. Be my pleasure, Mr. Gillette. Yeah, roll call. Go ahead.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you for not calling me Shirley.
No problem.
Let's, uh, have a motion for eleven point four, then we'll talk.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Laurie.
Laurie, okay. Uh, the air conditioning.
Yeah.
Mr. Kins, do you want to kick it off?
Sure, there were a couple of action items that were listed in the, um, in the minutes with regard to finding out if air conditioning would qualify for state debt relief if this were to go to referendum. Did we get an answer on that?
We, did we actually get an answer on that? Or the answer was yes?
The answer, uh, Mr. Kins, was yes to that. We did the research and it does qualify.
Okay, all right. So recognizing that there was, that there's a timely element to the, to the resolution, um, which was, um, the, the, the Operations Committee unanimously recommended moving it to the full board, um, I'm in support to bring in it to the further, um, for the board to vote on. Um, I'm, I'm going to vote against the, um, resolution as it stated, which is to install the, um, air conditioning for Aris and HMS, um, over the winter for a number of reasons. One is, um, the lowest bid had it being installed over the summer, and I would rather have, uh, air wind, air units be installed during the summer during the day than during the winter at night, where the classrooms will be exposed to, um, those winter conditions while the windows are taken out and the units are put in. It does save an additional ten thousand dollars, which I recognize in a one-hundred-and-twenty-three million dollar budget, ten thousand dollars may not be much, but ten thousand here, ten thousand there, it does add up. In January, we're going to get a facilities assessment, or roughly January. So within the next couple of months, we're going to get a list of all the, uh, facility work that needs to be done, and there may be some things that are going to be a higher priority with regard to student-staff safety, um, energy, um, that may take a higher priority. And if we commit to do this now, then that is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars that we cannot, um, address for, uh, potentially higher priority projects. Uh, and it's just was confirmed here, if we did choose to go to, uh, to referendum, um, we have the possibility of having up to forty percent of the air conditioning paid for by the state through state debt aid. So, um, but again, I want to move it to the, to the full board. Thanks.
Anyone else?
So I had a list of questions. Should I just go through them or...
Sure. I saw them, but we, yeah, is, is this one you emailed?
This was my email.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, did you have a chance to look at it, Mr. Mahmud?
Yeah, I, um, I have most of the answers, uh, Mr. Hill. I know you had emailed about five o'clock, so I wasn't able to get all of it done, but...
Sure, sure.
I do have some of the answers to your questions. I'm hoping I can respond to most of them.
Okay, sounds good. So I just wanted to confirm that it's eighty-two units, it's fifty at Aris and thirty-two at HMS.
That is correct.
And does this, um, proposal mean that all of the spaces at those both schools will be air-conditioned?
I'd like to, so I'm going to be careful about answering that because that, we, what we agreed to was we had, at our building principals meet with our architect, and these were the classrooms that were identified. So with your question where it said all the, the spaces, I just can't answer the word "all" because I, I don't know what that's, I mean, that can mean anything. That, this was, um, the units that we felt, uh, were instructional spaces. So I have a hard time, and I even won't be able to commit to that because that was talked to with the building principals. These were spaces that were designated as instructional that would help, you know, eighty classrooms.
That was correct. If you, if you recall, we also had some high-powered air conditioning units that helped to cool the, um, the gymnasiums in this building, as well as the, uh, cafeteria at the, at the middle school. But I don't believe that the gymnasium at the middle school...
No.
...was part of this. It was the, um, it was the classroom instructional spaces, uh, that, that we had as...
All right. So I'd be curious about that. How many rooms with students would be remaining, like not air-conditioned?
No, the, the answer to that was none.
None, okay.
It was the, it was the gymnasium at the middle school. You know, we, we have temporary, um, cooling that we bring in here for the auditoriums. This particular room is already air-conditioned. But it was designed for all of the, um, the classroom instructional spaces...
Okay.
...for the window units.
Okay, thank you. So, um, I'm not...
So no rooftop units are part of this. This is only window units.
So all of these, okay, so that was part two. So that all of these units are standalone, they're window units, they're controlled separately, there's no central air? They're not, they're not connected, like rooms are not connected to each other in any way?
They're on a separate breaker, but no, they're individually controlled.
Okay. So, does the building require any upgraded electrical work to install these units? And so that price that's quoted, seven hundred and eighty thousand, includes that number? Includes the electrical work that would be required?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So given the, um, so number four, my question is whether this bid spec and response has been independently reviewed by another firm?
So the specifications were reviewed by our attorney, uh, and by our architect firm. Those are the only two professionals that were, reviewed those bid specifications.
So my concern, and I'm actually inclined to vote no, even though I am for the air conditioning units, is that given our previous experience with, with work that was done that was not independently reviewed, since none of us are experts in this field, is that we could potentially, by accepting this bid tonight with very little amount of time to review, is we could put ourselves in a similar situation. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that.
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
For a minute, say something about that? So, um, we wouldn't, this would be a first. We wouldn't typically have an independent review. I, we, we typically would trust our professionals. For instance, let, let's talk about the attorney, for instance. We get advice all the time from our attorney. We do, and it, it could be great, it could be questionable. You know, unless you're an attorney here and have an opinion, there you go, Brett might have an opinion on it. But, but we wouldn't typically ask for, I mean, some of these things are big decisions, but we're not going to another law firm just to get another vote on it or another review. And this, and in the same way, the same thing, at least all the time I've been on the board, we trust the architect in the same way. Doesn't mean we have to going forward. It would be something totally new, uh, to get a second opinion on the professional that we're supposed to trust. Dr. Schiff, is that, am I up?
That, that's correct. We haven't had second, second professionals.
No, I, I disagree with all of them. For the plain reason that we wouldn't be sitting here... How long has this been going on, this discussion? Over, close to a year?
Well, it's coming up to a year.
Okay. And why are we having this discussion here later? Because our architects are, are the ones that screwed up, right? And we should have fired them because in any other business, if you don't do something that you're supposed to do, you get fired. You get released. So, A, I don't trust them right now. That's why we're putting them up for, I won't be on the board anymore, but we are putting them up for, uh, renewal, right?
You caught that. You caught that very good.
I did catch that.
You caught that.
I won't be here, but maybe I'll attend the meeting that night. And also, has anybody thought...
You're not going to be invited to play mini golf.
I'm trying to be Debbie Downer here, but anybody thought about vandalism that could happen to these window units as opposed to having roof units? We don't live in a perfect world. I know a lot of people want to think we do, but we don't.
I think I...
Are they vandalized now? We have window units now.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, Brett.
We have some window units now. I don't, I don't think we've had that... But look, look, we, we've had some window units. I don't think we've had an issue, but it's a valid, it's a valid issue. I think that the overriding concern, Mr. Cooper, you back me up on this and operations committee, was the cost. Uh, we had this review of, um, of, of whether we should go with, uh, rooftop units or, or window units a couple of years ago now, when you first were on, came on the board, probably fresh in your mind. Uh, and we had a meeting in this building, I think, and talked about it, uh, and, um, in the, over there in the, uh, office, and, uh, it was like million, millions of dollars, six, seven, eight million dollars...
Yeah.
For, for, just for Aris, I think we had a proposal, right?
They were, they were a very high number, yeah.
It was, it was very expensive. But of course, our architect would love us to do that.
Of course they would. I'm just saying, given the, given the history and what's happened, not only with this project but with other things, I'm not necessarily inclined to take everything at face worth value for them. I'm just not.
That's valid. Dr. Swanson?
There was a question raised at the last meeting about whether or not the architect had an engineer of record, uh, as part of the architectural review. That was not answered with respect to what's going on at the high school with the mold and whether or not, when we installed those units at, uh, adjacent to, um, the auditorium, whether or not there would be an effect that would sort of roll through the whole school. That is the only change that has happened in the years that we've had mold issues. So my concern has to do with what expertise... I, I'm not on the operations committee, and I don't know that I was even here when we reviewed architects the last time, but what expertise does the architect have? I mean, I would not trust an architect to, um, you know, to potentially look at the physical plant issues that might arise by, by putting in a bunch of individual units.
Well, let me just, um, sort of, this is a little bit devil's advocate, uh, but just from experience, maybe Mrs. Haas also knows something about this, that typically the, a school architect is well-versed in all of those things. But they do also lean on an engineer for things too. But, but they have, they have a wide variety of experience for all of the typical projects that schools do, including mechanical, um, systems and air conditioning, things like that. That's, I'm just putting that out there, but I'll, Mr. Mahmud, you, you were whispering that you had some...
Yeah, I, I think Dr. Swanson, so the, the architect of record, I'll give you an example, when we did the, uh, the middle school paving, uh, project, uh, they were a part of the design, but there came a point when they designed that project for us where they determined they needed an engineer, and, uh, then they actually subcontracted an engineer. So there is a professional reliance, if you want to call it. So when we do contract with them, the idea that they make that decision whether an engineer is, is needed or not, I don't believe anybody at the dais would be able to make that decision here, uh, but they did it, for example, at the middle school paving project. And, uh, they engaged an engineer and the engineer helped us design it, and they also did it with the high school turf. Uh, they didn't, they didn't sanction an engineer or subcontracted to an engineer, but they did put their seal of approval on this. Uh, just, I'm just answering the question.
Yeah, no, I, I, and I appreciate that. I find it a very different experience in my, in my work when we contract with somebody and they subcontract out pieces of it, that they don't look at the whole. They look at, is the engineering correct on this small piece? And I, you know, I, I don't have data to suggest, but, you know, just in terms of timeline, I, I believe there was, you know, that, a contributing factor of these additional air, air conditioning units in the high school that contributed to the mold factor. I just want to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row. I'm not saying that's not the case. I just want to be sure it is the case before we commit to spending a million dollars that we're not going to create a million dollars of problems, um, like mold remediation or anything else in the future. So, uh, you know, right now, I don't know that I'm comfortable voting yes. Um, I think Mr. Kins' approach of, of, uh, waiting, you know, from my perspective...
Let me ask, let me ask Mr. Mahmud this question. Um, so the, the bid that we received, how long is it good for if we, I don't know, if we wanted to get some answers when we come back here in two weeks, could we have a vote on, vote on it? In other words, what I'm asking is if we voted it down today, then it's done, correct? I mean, this bid is done. We can't, we can't revisit this bid if we voted it down today?
The board has the option tonight to table, uh, this item, and you have sixty days to award the bid. So the board does have another opportunity if, uh, the board selects to do that today.
When was the sixty days, you know, in the...
I believe it was from the bid opening. So, um, we have the bid opening date, uh, if you give me a minute, we can actually get that. What was that actually we have?
It was in October, right?
Uh, so the bids open October eighteenth.
Okay.
So we do, we do have some time, Mr. Gillette?
December fifteenth or something.
Yeah, yeah. If the board elects to do that.
I think there's some, I think there's some good questions. I think Mr. Kins also started off with a good one about.
The referendum.
About, about if we, because we didn't really discuss that possibility.
Four hundred thousand dollars isn't anything to shake, you know, I, I could, I mean, if somebody paid for it, that would be great. You know, anybody would say forty percent of something getting paid for is great, but do we know when the next dates are, we're eligible for referendum?
We do.
Our expert is, uh.
I know, I saw an email that I just don't recall.
She's an expert on this. She's well-versed now.
We do, uh, Zelinski will share those dates with us, please.
You know what it is? It's like, it's like, it's like, it's like a five.
No, but it's important for the public to know.
It's like a five-month window. From the time you decide to, to do it, um, you have to get it in maybe five or six months.
The next one was March, I believe. The next date was March.
Yeah, I think.
The next possible date that we can still get anything in by was March.
But then the board would know in January.
Okay, go.
That's your five-month window.
So our next available, um, construction application deadline that we would have available is March 29th, 2018 for a September 25th, 2018 referendum. The following would be May 2018 for a November referendum, June 2018 for a December referendum.
But then the board would have more information about other projects that they could possibly put in that referendum if that could be funded, correct?
That is true, yeah.
And you're getting that information in January?
That is the hope, yes, Ms. Gillette.
Yeah, we can have, we can have a referendum with more than one question or with combined into one question. We'd have a lot of options.
Well, we did it with the last one.
Yeah. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, uh, on the same thing, on the referendum. If, it has to pass a referendum in order to possibly get the 40% from the state, correct? Okay. Is it guaranteed that if we pass a referendum that the state will give us the 40% or they still have to give us their own approval? Like, it's eligible for 40%, but is it guaranteed if we pass a referendum?
That's what takes five months.
No, no, no.
So, so there is, um, the state does issue what they call a FECC and PEC letter, which is a preliminary, um, cost analysis first and then a final eligibility cost. Um, we would go through those two letters of approvals. If we get the final eligibility, a cost that would commit the state to that 40%, in the period of applying for a referendum, the board would know if in fact they are committing to that 40%. So there would be an opportunity for the board to actually be able to say, yes, we're getting that 40% with those letters. So once we submit it, we get those letters back and that is the assurance that the board, the state would give us that 40%.
Take a step back. My question is a step back. When we apply for that, is it guaranteed that because it's a capital improvement project that the state's going to go, yes, you're going to get the 40%?
So the answer to that is, i- in the past, what we've done, when we've done the last referendum, we've got, we had those approvals prior to.
I understand to get the approval, but if we apply now, how, how likely is the approval? That's my question.
Do they approve, do they typically approve air, do they typically approve air conditioning projects for the, for state aid relief?
The answer that we got to that is yes, that that would be an item that they would approve. But I, I can't, at this point, I can't.
We haven't submitted the application.
Right, I don't want to, I don't want to put this all off thinking that we could get 40% and go through the whole process and then at the end they go, well, only, we only approved 20% of air conditionings because we don't think it's a necessary item. And then we're right back at square one and we lost a cooling season.
Right.
So if we are going to possibly put this off, and I might be for that too, because this was my original question, um, um, you know, it would have to be a good chance of succeeding, not only on the state approval, but also on a referendum. Otherwise, we're right back where we started and we're going to have to pay the money anyway.
We're already, we're already going to miss, if we go to, the best we can do on a referendum is we're going to miss two more cooling seasons.
Right.
We're going to miss the spring and next fall too. Because the next referendum, referendum is November, is the next November election?
September.
Oh, September?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's the referendum. Then you have to build it. Yeah. Um, and then your, Tom's other point becomes invalid because then you're back to building in the winter. Unless you want to, you lose yet another cooling season, you know what I mean? We've already, we've lost two, but you know what I mean?
Right, that's, that's, that was my, that was my.
But I mean, if you got, if you got the dead state aid relief, you, you probably forget about the other point. I mean, you, you probably.
Like, like I said, there's a, there's a time aspect to it, which is why I was, why I'm in support of bringing it to full board now.
All right, so, um, so what do we want to do? Do you want to, do you need more information? Do you want to vote it down now? I see a lot of negativity on it, which is fine. Do you want to table it and, and come back in two weeks where we got a few more, maybe a few more answers? I mean, we got pretty good answers tonight, but we can get a few more answers. We can get some of Mrs. Trujillo's answers.
How long's the application process to the state to get a preliminary yes or no?
The, the information we've gotten in the past from the architect is, there's not a lot of people at the state that approve these, so there is a time lapse between when we get approval. There is no guarantee. It depends on the amount of volume that the person at the state has, because there's only a limited amount of people that review these applications. So when we asked that question and we tried to drill down to get an answer, we really couldn't get a straight answer in terms of, it really depends on the analyst that's reviewing it and how busy they are. Limited amount of people approving these type of applications.
But is it less than 60 days?
I, unfortunately, I can't make that commitment. They, they couldn't, they couldn't tell us yes or no.
Wait, so we can't get an answer from a governing agency? Stop.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Stop.
So, real quick, for reference, um, in terms of voting, this is, would be, would require a majority of the, of the voting members present.
Yeah.
Well, I'm enough. Tom sounds like he's enough, so there's two. Jean was questionable.
Do we want to table?
I would, I would table it. I think if we can get some answers and maybe.
Would you vote, would, um, Mrs. Haas, you haven't spoken on this?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, it, it appears that we are probably heading towards tabling this at least to the next meeting, but I just want to throw out there, is there any possibility of dividing up this project? In other words, there are certain areas of both of these schools that are like unbearable during the summer. And, you know, at the prospect of losing the, um, ability to air condition those rooms and, and losing the summer, are there some rooms or some sections of those buildings that it would be worth looking at?
The short answer is not, the short answer is not on this, not on this bid or this potential contract. Not, and the, the other part of the answer is we, um, look to combine this into a multi-school project to, to generate some savings.
I understand. I didn't know whether or not it was a per-item bid.
No.
Okay.
No.
No, it wasn't per item.
No.
So we're stuck with doing everything or nothing?
Yeah, on this, on this, well, we can have another, we can have a third go at this.
And then what is the proposal for dealing with the heat in these buildings, in these classrooms where children are for the summer and, and, you know, the spring, this fall?
Well, Dr. Schiff, I know you've dealt with it every year. You wouldn't, I, I suppose you've learned a few things.
We, as I mentioned before, we have these very large, um, industrial-sized air conditioning units that we use to cool both of the gymnasiums, which can provide some cooling areas during excessively hot days. But the, all of the buildings have, have hot weather procedures that they cycle kids into cooler areas, either the library or whatnot. My concern is that not a lot of instruction and learning goes on in those environments.
So then the question is, what's that worth?
So, look, I guess, I guess we'd like to do some more thinking about it.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that, because I think, but I think that's an important question too. I mean, in an ideal world, if we could have planned for a referendum, you know, six months ago, um, this wouldn't be a problem, but.
Well, the refer, a referendum could always fail also.
Yeah, that's true.
Air conditioning is a, air conditioning is, is a.
And let's discuss that.
Believe it or not, I think, I think air conditioning is probably less popular than a turf football field, believe it or not.
Well, you bring up a good point.
I, I mean, like it or not, I think that's probably, you know, that's going to be, that's the way it is.
If the referendum then fails, are we limited then from doing it?
No, that doesn't exist anymore.
No, that doesn't, that, that provision doesn't exist. The referendum would only be for financing. Referendum isn't, isn't the project, it's the financing for the project. You, you don't want to borrow that money? Okay, we'll, we'll re, we'll reorder our priorities and that may be top of the list, that may be second on the list now, and we can still do it. Um, so I'll, so at this point, I, I rec.
So, Mr. Gillette, may I just say, um, so, and Mr. Kins, I'm not fundamentally against spending the $780,000. I mean, I think that air conditioning is a worthwhile cause to spend money on. What I am concerned about is spending $780,000 and then having a $780,000 other problem because it was not designed properly. So if we table this, but we don't have another, um, review by a professional firm, an independent professional firm, I'm not sure that I'd be comfortable in two weeks anyway. So I'm hoping that by tabling this, that we can either go to an outside expert, um, look at another school district who's recently done this and ask for their advice in terms of who they used that was successful. So that's my comment.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I think Mr. Mahmood would have to do some investigating about how school districts handle something like that. At that point, you might, at that point, you might as well go for a completely new architect right now. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Because the fate's not there, not just from me, but from other people. And it shouldn't be with the administration because we're in a mess for a lot of reasons and they are part of it.
All right.
They are a piece of it.
Can I just also make a suggestion that, um, in, in doing this, it might be worthwhile, if we haven't already checked the references on this particular contractor with the lowest bid, to see what similar projects they did and whether or not there were any problems, given the issue that we had with our previous environmental person too. I mean, I, I think it's, uh, due diligence. I think we, we are, we have a fiduciary responsibility to this community to make sure that when we spend money, we spend it appropriately. And right now, I'm not comfortable with this. So I, I, I would make a motion to table this to try to get some answers to these very important questions. I, and similar, I think it's very important to, for us to have the appropriate environment here for, for learning for the 180 days that we have. Um, I don't know, I mean, I know the hottest areas of, of the two schools have already been addressed, so I don't know what these remaining 80 rooms, though I'm sure there are issues there on the hottest of days. But I, I need to make sure that when we vote to spend this amount of money, whether it's with a referendum or without, that we're doing it.
So, so that's a motion. Do we hear a second then on, Dr. Schiff? Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Dr. Schiff, this question.
No, I just, I just wanted to share with, for, for Dr. Swanson. The attorney reviews it in order to determine whether or not we can legally disqualify the lowest bidder. So they go through a whole legal process in order to do that. Typically takes about 48 hours. It's not an extended process for us. But that, that ensures that we have done our due diligence on the process, whether or not, um, it is a bidder that could be disqualified. So, um, that process has, has already gone through for this particular bid. But I, I think we're going to vote on, on tabling the motion. And it's my understanding, hearing from, from what I'm hearing from the board, is that you would like us to look at another party to review the bid specifications, to ensure an independent looksee on this, to make sure that we build confidence that the work is not going to unintentionally increase costs somewhere else. Am I, am I addressing that correctly?
Okay.
Thank you.
What's the start date on this current bid? I forgot. Do we have that?
November 18th or something.
November 18th, okay.
Isn't it?
And when's our next board meeting?
November 13th.
November 28th.
Oh, it's November 28th is the start date. And November 13th is our next board meeting. All right, so, um, good for now? All right, this is a motion to, uh, table the resolution to accept the.
It's 11 dot four.
Yep, okay, 11.4, um.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
Surely you may call it.
Mr. Cooper?
This is a vote to table it, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, so we're tabling that. We'll talk about it next time. Oh, we have to, oh, yeah.
Yeah, informational, um, items are available for the board review.
Suspense report. All right, um, from the public on old business, that last, last shot tonight. Last call. And we'll have us two. Let them go.
Hi, Amy Salinger, a teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School and the HVA Chequer. Um, I just had a clarification question on 9.7, which was the Bristol Meyer Squibb program, and I didn't catch it prior or else I would have asked earlier. It says January 2017 to June 2018. Was that a typo? Okay, that's what I thought, okay. And then, um, I also had a question about 11.4 with the air conditioning. Um, Mr. Kins stated a facilities assessment coming up in January and mentioned the possibility of student or staff safety issues. Does this happen every January and are we anticipating a safety concern?
Well, thi- this is part of our, um, of our, uh, facility assessment that we contracted for, that I mentioned today, we added the hardscape part of it and that, it's, it's that assessment, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely.
So it's, it's part of that assessment that I've been working on for a couple of months and we expect that to report in January.
But what type of safety, like you said, staff, like, that just, it alarmed me a little bit.
So let me, let me clarify. I didn't say that there were. I was just saying, if there was something that was discovered through that assessment, like for example, the, the life, the expected life of a, of a, of a air handling unit in a central area has only a year left and it's, and the recommendation is to replace it ASAP and that has a significant amount, we, we would have to draw from our capital reserve. And so my concern is I just want to make sure that when we get that report, we can look at if there's any very high priority projects that, that basically are critical to, to be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just one final comment. Are we, when we put out for bid, are you required to accept the lowest bid? Is that a state requirement or Department of Ed requirement?
I got this.
Yeah, you got it.
So, yes, the, the answer to the question is, um, if it's not a competitive contract, um, it's, and some, certain contracts are, we're allowed to do that. Where a competitive contract would be where we set up a committee, we set up criteria prior to the bid, we, uh, label the criteria by certain percentages, we have to get special permission to do those type of, um, biddings or contracts. But for this type of regular bid, it would be what we consider the, the clause that they use is lowest responsible bidder. So, uh, lowest meaning obviously in price, responsible meaning that they've met all the criteria that they're required to meet. So do they have, um, the proper licensing? Did they give us the bond proposal? And in their bid specifications, was there a materialist, uh, materialistic defect that would make them not the lowest responsible? But we would have to follow that chain of command, so lowest responsible is the answer.
Because I can't help but wonder, you know, as we talk about, you know, like we paid for this and now we have to pay to fix it, and I'm wondering if, because you're required to accept a low bid, is that kind of putting you in a perpetual state of having to, to fix mistakes that maybe could have been avoided if you were allowed to accept a different bid? That was my mindset there, but.
And I think, I think the, I mean, it's a good, it's a good point. I, I don't think though, um, if we're referring to what, you know, the, the other bid for the, the lead, I think there's a lot of discussion trying to correlate. That was through a consortium, uh, that was no, not the lowest responsible. We partnered with a consortium that, um, deals with many school districts throughout the state. That was very different. We actually went into a partnership and they went out to bid. We just kind of teamed with that. We legally could do that. Um, so from our perspective, lowest responsible, it may and may not correlate, but I think we do our due diligence with our own bids to make sure that our, our bids are legit. Like I said, with the lead, uh, testing as far as the vendor that was selected, that was through a consortium and they took the responsibility of that.
And I'm not questioning your, that, your decision, I'm just, is that more of a requirement that you're under and is there something, you know, I, I don't know what you could do about that, but you know, as far as changing a state regulation or something like that, that, but that seems to be an area where maybe, it, but you know, just because of regulations out of your hands puts you into a, that state.
No, I appreciate the comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt to follow up on Mrs. Salinger's question?
Sure.
Um, in the list where you said lowest responsible, responsible bidder, meeting all the criteria licensing requirements, is there any, um, indication for reputation? Previous experience in the field? For example, when a homeowner chooses to contract out, you may not choose the lowest bidder because such and such contractor has a better reputation, better warranty, et cetera?
Under those provisions, the answer is no. We wouldn't have that, that right. It would be a material defect in the bid, um, or, um, we'd have to go with the lowest responsible. But the idea of, of reference check and one would be better than another in terms of a reference, that would not be acceptable. Uh, but through the competitive bidding process, if, if we are grading it through that, and only certain contracts are allowed through the competitive bidding process, we would set criterias and percentages and maybe references or, you know, prior work would be higher percentages for our particular bid.
I think if we hired birds all though, and they were under, when they were under indictment, we could have avoided anything that we were, we had with them. I'm just saying, I'm thinking that's a legal option, so, I don't think that that's necessarily 100% accurate. That's a pretty good example, though.
Mrs. Haas?
There, there are companies though that are excluded from bidding because of bad work. work.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there are, there are companies that are not allowed to bid because they've done bad jobs on other projects, right?
Absolutely, Ms. Haas. There are companies that, state contracts that are, if they don't do, you know, proper work, that the state itself would forbid them from bidding, and they actually give us lists of bidders that would not be able to bid with us, absolutely.
Right, and, and, you know, honestly, I mean, you're talking about the state of New Jersey, so it can't really be a he said, she said. It has to go through a process of disqualification...
Yes.
...in order to be fair, so...
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, Laurel Drive, had two questions about two of the items that passed on the action agenda, one being 9.7, the Bristol-Myers Squibb virtual laboratory. Is this, I'm assuming this is something that we receive for free. We don't pay to participate in this, correct? Do we know what materials our students receive through their participation in this? Have we seen those materials?
This is, I believe, going to be our third year doing it, and it's different every year. If you reach out to Kim or send her a quick email, she will be able to answer that much more eloquently and quickly than I can for you.
Okay, but I'm assuming they receive some materials, correct?
I'm not sure if they actually receive materials because it's virtual, so the scientist is in a lab somewhere doing it, so I'm not exactly sure if they have materials in their hands or not. I'm not positive.
Okay, and, and let me be clear about my question. I think this is a, a great program. I actually researched this program, and I think that it's, it's a valuable program. So, I have no issue with the program itself. My question is in relation to the appearance of Bristol-Myers Squibb's name on this and the materials that the students receive or the virtual portal that they operate through. It's, you would assume that they'd have some knowledge of who did this. Is that correct?
I would assume so, yes.
Okay, but there was no hesitation to accept our participation in this, being even so Bristol-Myers Squibb has undertaken close to $3 million worth of political action in 2017 alone?
How much is the NJA spending?
I would be happy to get you that number.
I'm just curious.
I, I, my question being, though, is there hesitation, knowing that there's close to $3 million worth of political action that was undertaken?
No hesitation on my part.
Okay, and any other members or...
Why don't you poll the members, Mr. Kukiu? You want to poll the members?
That would be your right under Robyn's rule, sir, not mine.
Go ahead, go ahead. Continue.
My other question being with the donations for 11.7. Again, I have no issue with these. I think that they're wonderful donations, but I noticed that the Rotary Club was donating 552 dictionaries to our third grade classes, and having been an elementary school teacher myself, I've actually seen some of them, and they have a large white sticker on the inside cover that says Rotary Club. And I recognize that the Rotary Club is an apolitical organization under their charter and tax code, but we are moving forward with their agenda by giving these out to the students, and yet again, there was no hesitation on this one, no separation of it or debate.
I'll be honest, I've actually gone and handed out the dictionaries with the Rotary Club. I'm not going to hide from them. I'm embarrassed to be affiliated with them whatsoever.
Nor should you. I think they're a wonderful organization. I'm just questioning, being that there's been no policy change from the ninth to now, there's no separation of these items, there was no discussion of these items, they pass unanimously, yet on previous meetings, we've had very lively debates about the acceptance of donations.
But now we accepted the water bottles, so now we're free to accept all the rest.
So, you're saying that in your view, okay, so in your view, the policy has changed then, correct?
There was no policy change. We accepted it under you, we're accepting it then under then, and those are educational purposes where yours are not for educational purposes, although you're going to argue that they need water, and we actually need more water bottles because there's more water fountains and more kids that don't have water.
I would be happy to supply those if you gave me the number.
We've had water issues in Woodford for years, and you never offered water bottles prior to all of a sudden now.
Woodford has alternate sourcing that's been supplied for years, so there's never been...
But they're not reusable water bottles like you have.
I'd be happy to get some if you'd be willing to accept them.
Yes.
I look forward to you sending me the number, and I'll convey that to our division so that we can work on that.
We will get you the number.
Great, I appreciate the collaboration on that.
We appreciate your donation.
Sure, but my question being, there's been no distinction on this one, so to your point, Mr. Cooper, in your eyes, this policy has now changed, so moving forward, we'd be able to accept these donations without any hesitation or separation.
No, moving forward, we'll have a discussion if we feel it's warranted on every single donation, whether we feel it's warranted. If we have no discussion, we didn't feel it was warranted, we'll take each one individually every time. You're not to, you're not to assume anything else from that.
Sure, but from your comment, is it safe to assume that you have some organizations which cause you no hesitation and some that do?
Yeah, Rotary Club causes me no hesitation, Bristol-Myers Squibb causes me no hesitation. I'm not going to make a list for you.
Even though some undertake political activities?
Sure, I'm, I'm sure they do.
Okay, thanks.
Next time, I'll ask the Rotary Club to put a, a Make America Great Again sticker inside all their dictionaries, okay?
Why would you do that, sir?
Why not? Well, political things are okay, right?
Well, but the Rotary Club is an apolitical organization, so I fail to...
Well, I guess they would never do that, then.
Point of order, sir, please. We're getting off topic, thank you.
Yeah, I'm surprised we're bringing up this topic, actually.
Given the agenda items, I think it's fair to ask.
Sure, gotcha. Thank you.
Elena Misery, Hillsborough High School and Hillsborough Education Association. I just had a quick clarification. I have a couple of things, but just a quick clarification. At our last meeting on October 9th, there was a statement brought up by Mr. Fenster regarding the district-wide grading practice. I heard it referred to tonight as a policy, and I'm wondering if there has been any official change in that capacity?
No, there hasn't. It's a practice, not a policy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the clarification. I wanted to give you some good news about the stuff that our members have been doing during the last month. On October 20th and 21st, 15 members of the HEA, along with some members of their family, worked at the Respite Home on the Route 2, on Route 206, which is run and maintained by the Ark of Somerset County. We did general housework and stayed in their decks, and we had a great time interacting with the residents and staff. Our partnership with the Ark earned us the accolade of Ark Community Partner of the Year, and we were honored at their yearly banquet in June. In addition, this past Friday, 10 members of the HEA greeted parents and students at the Hillsborough High School homecoming game. Students in attendance received rally towels, and parents had the opportunity to talk with our members and, and talk about the great things going on not only at the high school but throughout the district. We would like to present the Board of Ed with one of the towels to be displayed where you see fit, as it truly exemplifies the Raider spirit.
Mr. Gillette, you wanted to...
Sure, I'll take that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Riley, Route 206, Hillsborough. Not the last time I was here, because that was for a vote, but the previous time I was here, I discussed a few things. I think Mr. Gillette and I went back and forth on a few things. Let me begin by saying, two weeks ago, unfortunately, I don't expect anyone in the room to know this, a 2014 graduate of Hillsborough High School died of an overdose. I have permission from her family to stand here and say, they do believe while she was in high school, she was doing heroin. Chris Christie has said, "This is the AIDS epidemic of our time." Donald Trump, our President Trump, has said, "This is a health emergency." It's 9:15, since I've been here, between 12 and 14 people have died from an overdose. I just ask, whose responsibility, responsibility is it? Two meetings ago, I said I'd give out free drug tests to anybody that wanted. I asked the parents to please get their heads out of the sand. I said, "I don't want the business anymore." I asked you guys to do something, too. You and I went back and forth about drug testing in the high school. You gave me some answer about employers say that drug testing doesn't work. Then you went on and said something about, uh, be careful, it's on tape. Then you said something about the military, it's proven the military drug testing doesn't work. I said, "This isn't employment, this isn't the military, this is the high school." The principal stood, sat right over here. I said, "Students, it does make a difference." There was a study in 2016 of high schools where drug testing goes on, drug testing does not go on. It is a deterrent. So, let, let's just go from there. I, I'm just, I, I, Judith, I don't know what, what committee you just talked about, but, you know, you talked about some movie you saw that you liked, and it touched you. I was like, wow, she's going to talk right now about she's going to show that in the schools. No, you didn't say that. You said, "Let's just get Narcan." That's great, we're going to get Narcan. How about if we start before we need Narcan? We haven't, we haven't heard anything about that. I mean, I'm just tired of it. It is your responsibility. You talked about financial responsibility, let's talk about all the responsibilities of the board. I thought what you said was great. I can't believe we were going to vote on air conditioning. Blew my mind. Thank you very much, Doctor, for, for what you said. But it's about time we do something. When I was in high school, there was a seminar. A gentleman came in, I was 15 years old, St. Joe's High School in Matutin, and he told a story about a gentleman who came from home from work, parked his car in the driveway, went in the house. The next morning, he backed his car to the driveway, and his wife had her cup of coffee. She was ready to wave to him. As the car backed out, she fell to her knees, dropped her coffee, and started screaming. He got out of the car and ran up to her, said, "What's the matter?" She pointed at the front of the car. There was an office meeting that, the night before. The person that he hit was still on the grill of his car. I'll remember that story forever, forever. When I was 15, that was told to me. The other one was, there was a girl on PCP. She was so whacked out that she took her eyeball out in front of her family at the dinner table. Gross, I know. It's here since I was 15 years old. 32 years later, I still remember, because we had an assembly, this guy came in and told real stories. My kids all went through this school system. Your future key is drug-free. That's great, let's hang a poster, let's, terrific, that's terrific. At the middle school, we have this night where I forget what it's called, forgive me, it's been a long time. About 80 people show up, and the kids show the different types of drugs on the, and we take a test and we get in circle group. We need to do more. You mentioned $123 million school budget. There's got to be room in there for education on what's going on. I know we budget drug testing. I spoke to parents, I spoke to athletes, I spoke, there's none been done this year, as of now. I'm not sure why. It's in your budget. This is your show, Mr. President. I'm not sure why it's not being done. I'm not sure if you can even answer.
I haven't reviewed that.
Excuse me?
I've not reviewed that. I, I haven't, I haven't asked about it.
Okay, does anybody know? Does anybody know the numbers? Is anybody concerned but me who keeps burying these people on Route 206? I'm not saying it's only your fault. I'm also saying the parents, the neighbors, the relatives. I dressed like this tonight, my wife said, "You're not putting a suit on?" I said, "No, tonight I'm not the funeral director. Tonight I'm the father, the neighbor, the friend, the concerned person in town." So, Judith, I ask you, put a curriculum together. Start bringing speakers in. Let's let these kids hear the hard, horrible lessons that people went through. Air conditioning's great. My kids all went through these schools, and, and some of my friends are here. We didn't have any air conditioning. My kids came home sweating. She mentioned something tonight. "What is the price of that kids in boiling room?" She's been here 13 years. What about the other 12 years we didn't have air conditioning? Now, oh my God, we need air conditioning. It's, there's got to be room for this. There's got to be a program. I'd be more than happy, Dr. Schiff, call me, I'd be more than happy to stand out on Route 206 and hold a sign. Do whatever you want, but we need to do. There are people out there, Chris Heron, if anybody has ever heard that story, please Google him. He was in the NBA. He had everything going for him. Turned to, to prescription pills. He now speaks all over the country. It is one of the most powerful, it's on ESPN, it was on E60, one of the most powerful speeches you can hear, how he lost everything, wife, kids, family, everything. And now he speaks on telling people the reality of what's going on. And you're right, 58,000 Americans died in Vietnam. 64,000 overdosed last year. So, you, so that what you, you did hear it right. More people die every year of overdose than, than Americans that died in Vietnam. Outrageous, but I just, I beg you to please do more, to please start these programs when kids are in the seventh and eighth grade, even sixth grade, little young. Please, we need to start educating them on that. Everything else you guys do is great, and the money we spend, and the sports, and the this, and the that. But we, like I said, we really have a problem, and people don't realize, and quietly, once again, two weeks ago, the poor girl is now buried and forgotten. But I don't want her to be forgotten. She shouldn't be forgotten. So, I just ask you, please, reach out, let, let, we need to do more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Craig, can I say something?
May I say something real quick? I just want to express my appreciation. I, I share with you the frustration and the, the, you know, the anger that, that accompanies whenever there, there's a loss like this. And I couldn't agree with you more that community and the school district must work together in order to minimize drug use within our schools. And I will call you, Mike, and we'll talk some more, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mrs. Haley?
So, this is not surprising, but yeah, this is my last hurrah here on the board. I've been on for almost seven years. I ran for this word, I didn't have kids in the school. I, I don't have any children of my own. I did it because it was a community thing. And anybody that knows me, and has watched these meetings or attended these meetings, knows how passionate I have been about the drug problem and the drug issue and the drug testing here. And I'm, I'm not going to let go even after I'm done with this board. And unfortunately, I was in a situation, a social setting, where I met a sibling of the young lady that Mr. Riley mentioned, and it just broke my heart, because the girl's standing in front of me crying hysterically. And Dr. Schiff, you can attest, we had a conversation today, again, about issues of vaping in the schools, of the drugs, of, for once, I would like to see something that's not on Facebook, on the community forum, that has something to do with, it was the homecoming dance, it was the homecoming this, it's the, this party, this happened at this function. For once, I would like to not see that going on in our community. And I understand the perception from parents saying, "It's my job to parent," but I also understand that we have over 7,000 kids and over 1,000 staff members that we need to have in a safe environment, too. So, it is part of our responsibility to educate and make sure that everybody's safe. So, I just implore everybody to always think, I know we all have our different opinions about it, but you know what? This is a real problem. And you know what? I said it on Facebook a couple of weeks ago, when I explained I wasn't, wasn't running again. I see a lot of comments online, but I don't see a lot of bodies in this audience. And that is part of the problem. I know we're all busy, but you have to be involved, and you have to make sure that people know that you care, that you're not going to tolerate it. And that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Riley, for bringing this up. I mean, we talk a lot about this in the Education Committee meeting. Along with the Narcan policy, we were talking about ways to incorporate prevention into our curriculum and working with the other partners. One thing I want to say is, before I ran for the board in 2012, I was very active in the HSA, being president at Triangle School and at this school. And the HSAs here spend tens of thousands of dollars a year on educational resources like assemblies. And, you know, what, what I saw when my kids were here in fifth and sixth grade was a transitioning, and then seventh and eighth grade, was a transitioning, because that was when the bullying law came into being. And we had a lot of really good assemblies come in before, starting the messaging, age-appropriate ways, at fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And we have babes, and we have...
Something every year.
Yeah, we have something every year. I mean, I, you know, we start talking about smoking in kindergarten and alcohol in second grade, and there, there, there is some programming, but I would agree with you that I've seen a diversion away from, at the most critics, at the most critical points. And I don't know, I don't have school, kids in these schools anymore, fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth. Once they get to high school, you know, it's, it's really hard to, to, to get them back if they've already sort of think it's a ridiculous thing to talk, to message. The, the 12th grade, you know, every 15 minutes is a very, very powerful thing. I think it impacts the kids who are actually in it, and, and then they, they and their parents do something, a Bridgewater manner, but the, the rest of the kids just have that day, and then the next day when there's the, the actual law proceedings and everything. You know, I do think that impacts them. Maybe we need to do something like that a lot earlier. I mean, I, I absolutely agree. And I know we've given direction to our guidance counselors to bring more to us so that we could support it. It is a horrifying piece of data that every six weeks, we have a 9/11 happening because of just opioids, nothing else related to cocaine and, and other things, which, you know, are not as accessible. So, I, I agree with you, and I do think we do need to do more on this, and we need to partner with the Alliance and whoever we can to prevent even one death. And, and the random drug testing, we did review those data, too, and I know you, you brought that up. I'm very supportive of the random drug testing. I have been disappointed that we have not kept to the numbers that we budget for. And, you know, I think we do need to look at whether or not we need to allocate more resources in that way. Resources are tight, but every, what is one life worth? So, you know, you need, we need, we do need to keep this in mind when we formulate the budget as well, and when we decide whether or not we're doing enough. So, thank you.
The budget is tight, but would you rather your child be sweating in class but coming home at the end of the day and seeing them go through life? I mean, you can't. But I'm going to hold Mr. Gillette accountable. We're going to start this drug testing, whatever we, whatever we budget for, he's going to get the numbers up. Because he's president, it's his board, it's his show. So the every 15 minutes, to touch base on that. You're right, that is terrific. It's a terrific program. It's emotional. I think it does work. But I think that's been thrown down our throats forever, drinking and driving. If the young kids today, my son is 25, if I ask Christopher, how many people do you know that have been killed by a drunk driver or died as a drunk driver, versus how many kids did you go to school with that have overdosed and died? The scale has swayed now. So the every 15 minutes is great, but we've got this new thing, as Governor Christie has said, you know, the AIDS epidemic of our time. So the every 15 minutes is a terrific program. We need other phenomenal programs, speakers, things, telling these heart-wrenching stories about the opioids. You're right. Thanks.
Well, can I just respond to Mr. Riley? So I just wanted to say that, Mr. Riley, thank you for your comments, but I was not, do not support when you called out Mr. Gillette, our board president. We speak as a board. None of...
All kind of...
Please, please, please do.
Nah, I don't...
But I just want to support Mr. Gillette, as we are a board.
I just haven't, I...
Last time I spoke, he said he does not support drug testing, and he does not...
May I just please say that, as a board, policy, we do not speak individually for the board. We only speak as a unanimous...
Alicia, come on up.
Just, I don't have a child, Alicia Gay Rubelis, I have one child just started in the system, and he is proudly wearing his red drug-free label for the past week. He made sure that, he put it on every single day, and when we couldn't find it, we were almost late for the bus once, but he wore it. So at least, I'm not sure what he's being told in school, but he did know that it was important to wear it. And I would hope that, just tagging on with that, that at least maybe we get asked the principals, maybe send him a letter, or email, or just saying, offering his suggestion of, he will give a test, you know, to the kids, to the parents, to test their kids if they wanted to do it that way as well. Just take him up on that. I don't follow everything on like the mom-to-mom site on Facebook, but I'm going to get his information afterwards if he sticks around, and I will post it myself if people wanted to know. Anyway, thank you. So I was just wondering also, have you guys created an email list to announce Board of Education meetings to the public?
Board of Education meetings are published on the district website. The community is always invited to subscribe to BoardDocs.com, and it will, you'll be able to have access, online access, to review all of our agendas and the backup information.
So that will send note, as a reminder, a couple of days before the meeting?
No, no, those, it doesn't send out a message at that particular point, that the board agendas are available online, but the calendar is on the board agenda. We also advertise our agendas in two local papers, I believe, and get that information out.
Because I was just listening to Austin Miss Haley saying that, you know, it'd be nice if more people came. We have a smattering of maybe 20 people here today. That's pretty good compared to the other nights that I've come. But if you would remind people who opt in, you might have more repeat customers. I'm just saying. And I've mentioned this before.
We also have, and we post online all of our meetings. They are recorded, and we post them on YouTube within 24 hours of the meeting. And we're now typically getting between 100 and 500 hits on those as well. So I, not that I wish to dissuade people from coming to our meetings and being here live, but people can see the meetings from beginning to end online at YouTube.
And that is terrific. Thank you for that. I think that some, I'm sure that some districts don't do that. So my next question is, how many, do you have any other meetings that were previously scheduled? Are they going to be changing throughout the rest of the year? Have you already determined if any other dates would be changed?
This was unique.
No, we did have this recent meeting. This meeting was a changed meeting, which was discussed at the meeting prior to, which was advertised and posted due to New Jersey School Boards Association was conflicted, and we had members, as well as myself, that wouldn't be able to come to the meeting.
Yes, I did hear about that after the fact.
It happens, but it's rare that we have to change a meeting.
So nothing coming up for the rest of the year that you know of yet?
That's correct.
Great. I just, I'm mentioning this just because I have the township calendar, and I understand that's printed beforehand. I also had downloaded the thing that goes onto my calendar, and that apparently didn't update. And unfortunately, since I had it on my calendar for last week, I would have gone to another meeting had I known that this one had been moved, and if it had probably, if I'd been on an email list, I probably would have heard about it. But I don't check your website, so thank you for confirming that no other dates seem to be changed going forward. Great. So also, have you set a date for the five-year plan, announcing it yet?
We're actually, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Gillette shared, as part of the Governance Committee, that they received a preliminary report from each of the leaders of the work groups. So we have three work groups, as you recall, early childhood education, college and career readiness, and student life as well. Actually, Dr. Antounas chairs and is the point person on that project. We will be presenting to the board on the November 13th meeting, and we'll be getting out information to all of those, including yourself, who participated as part of the stakeholder meeting. And some of the members of the audience are here tonight who participated over a year ago in those stakeholder meetings. So we'd like to get people out to hear the full work from those, from those work groups, which, remember, they distilled the information from all of the stakeholder meetings that we had.
Okay, great. Yes, I actually asked Kia if we could have everybody re-invited to that. That's great. One last question for you, I think. So the contract that you have with technology, or go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
Oh, I was just wondering, the contract that you have for technology, it costs about $500,000 a year. Is that correct?
Mr. Mahmud?
I don't, I wouldn't have that number at the moment, at the ready. That's something I can get for. I apologize, I don't have that ready.
We have a renewable lease on all of the computers. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I was just wondering if that could ever be that amount, if it was under contract, that you had to pay it for four years continuously to get up to $2 million or so, or if that could be pushed back? And so if you could push it back, could you have some money to pay for the air conditioning units? Things like that? You know, use the technology for like one extra year? I don't know how that works exactly.
There's a lot of different expenses that go into technology. We have employees, is their expense counted? We do have leases, and then when leases end, we typically get another lease with new machines, right, new computers. So that there's a budget for technology. We can look in, we can look into it.
Yeah, it was my memory that the Chromebooks, is that what they're called? That that was a $2 million thing over four years or so.
Something like that, yeah.
So I was just wondering if that, you know, I'm just hearing your concerns with the air conditioning. I know I came from a school where it hits 90 and you're out. And we knew what 90 felt like, because, you know, who doesn't want to get out of school? So I was just bringing that up as a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer something?
Sure.
Alicia?
Mrs. Huns.
Usually, our board meetings are the second and fourth Mondays of the month, but in December, our meetings are December 11th and 18th, because the fourth is Christmas Vacation. So that is an irregularity coming up in December.
December 4th, wouldn't it be Christmas Vacation? Would be the end of the month?
Anyone else?
Just one thing. Is it possible to submit our bid to the state now for the air conditioning to get some kind of preliminary going? So if we are tabling this, we have some kind of idea that maybe we can get an answer within 30 days or 15 days or...
It's, well, it's a whole process. It's something that the architect works on, right?
Yeah.
It's a whole separate, it's a whole separate process.